Call the meeting to order at 5:30. Stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, every day and justice for all.
Justice for all.
If you run your mouth, you're out. One more.
I said justice.
You will speak during open meeting, and that's it, or you're out.
We're in our own business.
Adding or deleting anything to the meeting? Do we have anything to add or delete?
Yep, we have, I request that you add a letter of support for the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union's application for a dec- a digital equity grant. It's to provide digital access for all students.
Meeting start at 5:30.
Is it about to be turned off? We're good now.
Anything else to say?
Too many shows.
Can we please stop talking? And just, can I carry on with this?
Absolutely.
Administrative matters. We all had the orders payroll check warrant before the meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look this over?
Yeah, Val, before you get to that, can you just make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
Yes, we make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the letter of.
Letter of support for the Rutland Northeast Supervisory.
Digital access for all students.
Second that.
All on paper.
Aye.
Aye. Again, under administrative matters, I make a motion to approve payroll 91424 in the amount of $11,995.14. Check warrant 91924 in the amount of $61,262.66.
Second that.
Second then.
All on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Also, the minutes for 9924 were sent to us beforehand. I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second that.
Announcements. We have a third road crew member, Gabriel Moore. Congratulations, we welcome him. Do we have any other announcements?
The only other thing is that the Town Fair for Municipal Officials is in Killington on October 2nd. I have sent you the agenda. If you would like to attend those seminars, the deadline for registration is on the 25th. So if you could let Jesse or I know if you would like to attend. Again, the date of the seminars is October 2nd.
Moving on to business. We have an open meeting law complaint.
Right, right. No public comment?
Excuse me. Public comment. Sorry for skipping that, I don't mean that. Public comment.
So first off, I'd like to, I'd request to be placed on, appointed on the planning commission as there's a vacancy and also on the energy committee as there's a vacancy. I'm gonna ask the select board, where is the office of the select board? And who runs that? And who wrote the letters to me? And why the letters weren't signed? And I could let you sign your letters if you'd like. You know, because they sent some of them. They sent me a lot. Nobody wants to sign their letters. I think that was, that might not be. The town sent me letters, but nobody signed them. You want to send the letters saying that you investigated the complaint? Did you investigate? Who investigated?
My signature's enough.
Huh?
I said my signature's.
So you wrote that letter?
I.
You investigated?
I okayed that letter.
Okay. Did you investigate Megan as well?
Yes.
On your own? So that's a flat out lie, right?
I don't lie.
You didn't lie?
I don't ever lie.
My, my name was never mentioned in that executive session.
No, you said we were talking about you.
You did, which is a violation of the law. He heard it. You also talked about appropriating $50,000 from Howard Smith. That's supposed to be public information. You also talked about.
One minute.
Ready? I'm gonna stop my time again since you just stopped me. Nope, you just stopped me again. I'm gonna reclaim my time, please.
One minute. Go. Go.
You don't remember what you said? Seth, did you remember saying that or hearing my name mentioned at the, in the executive session? Or money being appropriated? Or security for the best of you, how we're not gonna let people in? And how all the boards are breaking the rules? Do you remember saying that, Seth, or hearing it?
We're not on trial, you have a chance to speak.
I'm just asking.
You don't have to ask.
I'm just, oh, no, no, I just, I'm asking Seth, I didn't ask you. Seth, did you remember hearing any of that? Yes or no?
We are not on trial.
I asked him a question, yes or no? Did you talk about that in the executive session? You didn't hear my name mentioned about the $50,000 or all the boards? We're requesting to have those minutes since you didn't talk about what you were supposed to in that executive session. By law, you weren't allowed to talk about any of that stuff. It's all supposed to be made public. I can get it through the Attorney General, or we can go over it now. One or the other.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Under business, letter A, open meeting law complaint.
I have my hand raised, Val, I am still here. And I have options for public comment too, correct?
Sure.
Yep, go, two minutes.
Okay, so on September 9th, how many members of the planning commission were there?
I don't attend those meetings.
So where is the office of the select board? And who is sending the correspondence for the select board?
That's the town administrator.
That's Sarah, right? Okay, so who is going to sign the letter from the office of the select board sent to Mr. and Mrs. Gates? I'm hoping that all of the select board members are gonna sign it?
I signed it for the select board members.
Okay, and the select board member placed who in charge to investigate the violations of the open meeting law? I want to know who the select board member placed in charge of the investigation? No answer? Who is gonna conduct the investigations into the town officials? The town officials or Sarah? Answer that, Val.
A little respect, Carol. We communicate through Sarah. And we all spoke about it and agreed on our answer. You're done talking.
So Sarah's conducting the investigations, correct, Val?
We all had a virtual meeting through Sarah.
You know, I've always been that.
Who conducted that executive session? I'm asking the questions. I am asking the questions right now. This is my time, and I want to reclaim it. I'm requesting, who is in charge of these investigations? Are town officials in charge of investigating themselves?
I can contact.
We have one for you too, Val, are you gonna be in charge of that? We have one for you too, Sarah.
I can answer you here, are you told to that?
Okay, let's carry on. Business, letter A, open meeting law complaint. I'm responding to the complaint. September 9th, 2024. Notice response from the office of select board to open meeting law complaints received 91024 and 91224. On September 10th, 2024, the town of Mendon Select Board received a letter with hearsay allegations from Mrs. Carol Gates that members of the public could hear the select board discussions in executive session and that they violated the open meeting law on September 9th, 2024. Mrs. Gates was not present at the town office during the meeting. She participated remotely. A second letter of complaint submitted by both Mr. and Mrs. Gates was received on September 12th, 2024 that included additional claims of violation, of violation of VSA State Statute 313A3. Mr. Gates was present at the town office during the select board meeting. The Mendon Select Board meeting was scheduled for September 9th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. The agenda warned the select board will enter executive session to discuss employee evaluations per 1 VSA State Statute 313A3. A motion was made by Val Taylor to enter executive session at 5:51 PM with the select board and Sarah Tolle present to discuss employee evaluations per 1 VSA 313A3. Motion seconded by Seth Bridge. The select board unanimously approved the motion. All members of the public present were asked to leave the conference room as well as those with remote access to the meeting. The chair declared the board out of executive session at 6:27 PM. Minutes of an executive session need not be taken, but if they are, shall not be made public, subject to 1 VSA 312 State Statute 312B. The select board discussed the employee evaluations of three hourly employees, two of which are appointed officials. All discussions in executive session were done in compliance with 1 VSA State Statute 313A3. No further details about these evaluations will be disclosed to the public by the select board. The select board considers the claims submitted to be outrageously false and were made by individuals that were not privy to the discussion being had in executive session and in accordance with law. No violation of the open meeting law has occurred, and no cure for businesses.
I'd say that's a straight out of law. Black lead, law. Right.
B. 6 o'clock. Rutland Regional Plan 2026 Phase 2 Public Engagement. Is Logan with us?
So Logan doesn't seem to be online yet because he's intending to come at 6 o'clock. And that's 20 minutes from now. So I think we can continue with the rest of the agenda. And when he arrives, we can get to that line item of the agenda.
Letter C, appropriation request procedure for town meeting 2025.
So historically, the town has required a petition signed by 5% of the voters to get an article on the ballot for a town meeting. After, or during COVID and after, they waived that petition requirement if the town had funded the organization in the previous year without an increase of the amount that they're requesting. So I'm recommending that you set that procedure continuing for fiscal year '26. Typically, they, organizations will start getting their signatures around this time. And as those requests come in, we can let the organizations know that they do not need a petition if they are an organization that is re-requesting the amount that they're requesting from last year.
Is this, is this something open to discussion?
Yes.
Do I, is there any protocol I need to do to make a comment about that? Can I, can I just speak now about it?
You are speaking, so continue.
No, I didn't know if I should make my point or if I had to make a motion or something to make a point. I personally would like to see the policy go back to the way it was before to get, I don't think, if we're giving town dollars, I think 45 signatures is not a lot. And I think, you know, there's a lot of people asking us for money. And I just think we need to make sure there's the support of the whole community when we give this money. So that's just my two cents. I don't know how Val and Seth feel.
I agree, actually. I agree with this. And I think in the past, we've spoken about maybe, for example, the Barstow, I think they require, they request 3,000 and maybe see what they have spent it on in the past. Or my, have we brought that up? I, I kind of would like to see how it's used. But maybe everybody can't do that. Definitely a petition, I'm on board for a petition, again.
And I think we can have the petitions out in the town office for when people come in, you know, to sign. But I just, I just really feel like we need to have support shown. We can't make these decisions, I don't think.
So I just wanted to clarify two organizations that the select board has built into their budget. And that would have been the Barstow Youth Club and the Mendon Historical Society. So you are requesting, I mean, it sounds like Val is requesting a meeting with the Barstow Youth Club to go over what they've spent their funds on in the past.
And I think that'd be good because if we get asked at town meeting, then we'll have the answer. You know? But I do think that Historical Society in Barstow, that's part of our, our town. I'm talking about all the other ones that come in from out of town, from Rutland, and that's the ones I'm more interested in having the support shown.
Like people's friends.
Yeah, historically, we have six or eight organizations with a total $10,000.
But, you know, I had a great meeting last year when the woman from the, I think from the library was there to speak. And granted, you know, it's nice if we have a board, if there's a board member from Mendon on that, the library, it's nice for them to come speak. But, you know, I just think, and also, I just think, you know, we need to set a precedent so there aren't more, more organizations coming to the, all the town, you know, into the towns and not thinking there's any, you know, signatures required.
Yeah. Just for your information, the Rutland Free Library is also a request that is built into the budget by the select board. So that would also be a meeting with the library to discuss funding in the future. The appropriations, I don't have that list in front of me, but that would have been organizations like Brock, the Boys and Girls Club, the Southwest Council on Aging. I'm not gonna remember all of them off the top of my head, but.
Wonderwee.
Yep, Wonderwee. Yeah. So if you would like to change the, and implement the petition requirement, that, that could require a motion and see if that passes. We'll go forward.
So I would like to move that we get, we return to the policy of getting 45 signatures for people asking the town of Mendon for donations that are outside of our community.
And can I just clarify that motion? You're, it needs to be signed by 5% of the voters, whatever that is, not the 45 signatures? It's approximately 45 signatures. But that'll depend on whatever the voter checklist is. So it's, if you could just clarify that motion to include 5% of the voters instead of.
Okay, then I would like to, I'd like to move that we require 5% of the voter registration list to approve any funds requested from outside of our community of the town budget for town meeting.
Second that. All on paper.
Aye.
Diesel and, letter D, the diesel and propane contract prices. We need to make a decision whether or not to lock the prices in as they go down little by little. We could lock it in now, we could wait and see if it goes down anymore. So this is a discussion.
I had hoped to, Joy was reaching out to one company to update the quoted price because their quote, their prices are only valid from Irving for 24 hours. So in order for us to make a decision tonight, we wanted an updated price. She did not submit that to me today. But I, I wanted to get, as these fluctuate, sometimes the prices are fluctuating daily. Is the direction from the select board, certainly the contracted prices are coming in lower than just the ordering prices. But the question is when to lock them in. So, you know, they do continue to go down week by week. That can change. But forecasters are forecasting that the prices will continue to go down until the election.
Right, so the election does, that was my question. The election will have an impact on the prices. Or could.
Potentially. It could. It could. I really wanted to see the comparison.
What's the prices going on?
I really wanted to see the comparison of this week's Irving price compared to last week's Irving price because last week was $1.77. And so that would again show us what specifically Irving was quoting us versus suburban propane. And then the diesel price, the same. That isn't going down in as large of increments, but it is still, you know, on a downward trend. And it was Irving and. Drawing a blank on who the other quote was from. Champlain Valley.
What was the price on the diesel, Sarah?
Diesel in September was 3378, 3.378.
I don't mind waiting until the next meeting if I don't know how Megan and Seth feel about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've got a couple more meetings before the election, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's wrong by me. Are we using off-road, Sarah?
I'm sorry, what was that, Seth?
Do we use off-road diesel for like the grader?
Off-road diesel for the grader.
And the backhoe?
Um, I, I mean, to tell you the truth, I don't know. This would be to fill the diesel tank that's down at the garage. So if they're purchasing diesel a little separate for the grader and the backhoe, that would be through the cans. And I don't know.
Do we have an extra tank or do we just use on-road?
You, you know the equipment better than I do. So this, this would be to fill the, to fill the tank down at the garage.
For the trucks.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a lot cheaper with offering, so just something to think about in the future. Gotta have on-road. When you're running it, the truck's on-road. It's reusable, I think it might be exact. No. We'll look, we should look into it though, in the future. We are working on the cover for the tank, right? We'll leave you a follow-up. So we might want to think about that in the future. Just something to think about.
For the tank, you know, that was approved through the arbitrations.
Yes, a lot less expensive.
So have we, I'm sorry, agreed on waiting, please? Agreed on waiting a couple more weeks to make a decision? Everybody comfortable with that?
I'm with you.
You're muted, Megan.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay.
I just said I would agree with waiting.
Okay. Okay, I'll do that. Letter E. Sarah, I'm just gonna read the first paragraph and maybe everybody will get a little idea of what we added. The, the letter from the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union. Their request for support. So the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union is in the process of applying for a federal digital equity competitive grant, which would provide critical funding to enhance digital access for our students and community members. And our support in this effort would be very essential to strengthen their application. Do you need a motion to approve that letter of support?
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
Did anybody want to have any questions about this? I can read more if you want.
I don't, I don't think you need to read more, for my benefit.
Well, I'll read it too.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the letter of support to the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union.
Close the document.
All on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
And that is our meeting. We can adjourn the meeting at.
So we expect Logan is gonna attend at 6 o'clock.
Oh, that's right. Excuse me.
So we have 10 minutes.
So maybe make a recommendation to adjourn the meeting until 6 PM.
Sure.
That is in order for Logan to attend the meeting.
Sure. We will adjourn the meeting until 6 PM. It's 5:58.
Oh, I had 5:55, that's why I thought that.
I have 5:55 as well.
I have 5:55 also.
It'll be about one minute, but.
This conference will now be recorded.
Mendon Select Board calling to order at 6:02 PM. Logan, thank you for coming. You have the floor when you're ready.
He's muted.
He's muted.
Just for the audience, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission has launched their second phase of public engagement for 2026, their regional plan. Logan, you are muted. You can take the floor when you're ready. Fill us in.
This might be Logan's first time using GoToMeeting, so.
That's okay. The first phase was gathering our reaction to what we've learned with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And phase two is getting our thoughts on their plan drafts. Nope, he just left again.
Nope, he just left again. So Val, if you could also just start going down through maybe what the recap was on page 2.
What is the Rutland Regional Plan? Phase 2, a comprehensive eight-year through 2026 through 2034. It's a plan to guide and accomplish coordinated and efficient community economic development in the region that balances economic development, social, cultural, and environmental priorities. During Phase 1, they've reached out to us, the residents and stakeholders across 27 towns in the Rutland region. Through a dynamic mix of engagement opportunities, we listen closely, they listen closely to our thoughts, concerns, and hopes for our future. You can see these results at the website, rutlandrpc.org, is that a slash, Plan 2026? Could we have these, will we have these websites on in the minute, Sarah, in case anyone does care to look them up?
Yeah, this presentation will be attached to the minute.
Phase 2 goals. Again, Logan, you're welcome to jump in at any time. There you go.
Can you hear me? I apologize.
Yes, we can hear you.
I apologize. I'm so sorry. I've been.
That's okay. You have the floor.
Meeting platform.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you so much for, yeah, absolutely. I'm going to leave my camera off because I'm afraid if I turn it on, it's going to create more technical difficulties. But yeah, I apologize again for, for the delay. Yep, so we're, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission's in the process of updating our regional plan with the, the goal of adoption being mid-2026. So I'm here to kind of talk about our public engagement efforts from the first phase and we're jumping into the second phase. And so really the, the purpose of the second phase, which is running from now to the end of November, is to, one, gather a reaction to what we learned in Phase 1, make sure what we heard was correct. And then, two, we've also drafted some policies and we're looking to hear input from the public on those specific policies. In Phase 1, which occurred last winter, December 2023 to March 2024, we went to every Select Board and presented on our Phase 1 engagement and the opportunities that occurred. During that time, we also did what we called pop-up events where we kind of tagged along to other town events and we did that through 21 different municipalities. And then we also had our own events, what we called open houses, where we did five of those. Thank you, Sarah, for sharing those slides. And the open houses were our own events to, to get input also for Phase 1. And the big also public engagement method that we did was the survey, which had over 1,200 responses from all across the Rutland region. In Phase 2, we were taking a similar approach with some slight tweaks. We're still going to all 27 towns, all 27 Select Board, or towns, Select Board meetings to make the public aware of our different public engagement opportunities. We're doing five pop-ups where we're going to be tagging along on different events across the region. And then we're doing two feedback sessions, which are specific opportunities where the public can provide input and our RPC staff will be going over all our policies. And I just want to make a note that the first feedback session is this Wednesday, which is available in person at our office in Rutland, but also there's a virtual option. And the slides do have a link, but I'll just link it as well. All the information can be found at rutlandrpc.org backslash Plan 2026. And we're also doing another, another survey to get input specifically on the policies. And really, we're, our goal is really to provide various opportunities for the public to provide input. So in addition to everything, all the opportunities I also just spoke of, people are welcome to email us at plan2026@rutlandrpc.org, as well as we also have a mailing address. And again, all that information is found on our website at rutlandrpc.org backslash Plan 2026, which is also on. Yeah, if anyone has any questions, but I really appreciate you all taking the time and I apologize for the delay, technical difficulties.
We appreciate your coming. We appreciate the study.
Thank you, Logan.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll make sure the website is easily accessible.
I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Logan?
This conference will now be recorded.
Logan, thank you. If we have any questions, we'll reach out, but thank you for doing this.
Yeah, sounds good.
We'll post the information, Logan, on our website and our Facebook page for the meeting on day 2.
I appreciate that. That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. I think that wraps everything up. We can adjourn the meeting at 6:12.